I'd like to call Ms. Jensen, Jensen, Jensen.
Jensen.
To the podium.
Podium, I wanted to say to the stand. Staff report, please.
We'll see how it goes. All right, for the record, Jaclyn Jensen with Community Development. With me today, as we already had been sworn in by Ms. Vance, I have John Dolmar, Mike Kirby, Tom Ross, Jay Sweet, and Sam Vincent. Again, the request, Ms. Vance, read into the title block. I first want to apologize because on the agenda, I did not change the number of rooms, the reduction, so I just want to put that on the record. I do apologize for that. The staff was working very hard with the applicant to get the revisions in, so it was just an oversight, so I do apologize for that. But the request is to amend the master concept plan and the associated conditions and deviations to support the amendment, increase the maximum number of hotels to forty to three ninety, at a height not to exceed seventy-five feet, and then the reduction in the commercial intensity. Just to give you the application request history, and it really was to address the public in the room, because this application has morphed over time. You know, as the applicant stated, it was in zoning review for approximately a year and a half, and that's because originally this request did come through as a comprehensive plan map, and map and text amendment to allow for an additional height. However, that request was withdrawn earlier this year. And then with the zoning amendment, they two had just recently requested, or sorry, amended their request to reduce the number in hotel rooms and also the commercial intensity to help address some of those concerns that staff had relative to intensity and things of that nature. So that is why there's a revised July staff, sorry, July staff report and then revised August report based on those changes. Property description, as was already stated on the record, future land use to general commercial. The current mixed-use plan development does allow for two hundred and twenty multifamily units with up to sixty thousand square feet of commercial uses and a forty-room hotel, and the current use is eighty multifamily units with private recreational uses such as the clubhouse and the pool amenities. The entitlement history, just so everyone is aware of how this project has evolved over time. Originally, the zoning was approved in two thousand and two for a hundred and sixty multifamily units with seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial. Several administrative amendments were processed and reviewed by Lee County, who was the review entity at the time for the city, where they did change some of the master concept plan development areas and as well approved a parking calculation deviation. In two thousand and four is when there was a development order that was issued for the property for nine buildings and the clubhouse amenities, however, only five buildings were constructed. And that was mainly probably because of the downturn in the economy. In two thousand and seven, that's when the zoning was amended to, for increase from the one sixty multifamily to two hundred and twenty multifamily units, sixty thousand square feet of commercial uses in the forty-unit hotel. And I believe at that time, that's when they also added additional property. Then in two thousand and eight, Lee County had approved a parking deviation which essentially, and I'll show you on the next slide, allowed for the parking to be angled at ninety degrees and to back out into a right-of-way. This is location map that was provided to us by Grady Minor showing the limits of the MPD, Master Concept Plan area, subject of today's request. This is the current master concept plan that was modified in two thousand and eight. It's in your packets as attachment C. And I just wanted to go over the current entitlements as it relates to today's requests so you can kind of understand why staff is proposing some of the conditions that they are, especially relative to height. Here you have the TC five parcel, which was originally approved with fifty-five feet over four habitable floors, and it could have residential or commercial uses. You also had the TC two area, which is this area in here, which also had the fifty-five feet over four habitable floors. However, there was a ninety-foot setback approved here where no building could exceed thirty-five feet or three habitable floors. Then you have the R one area, which is this area here, and you have the R two area here, which only allowed for thirty-five feet and three habitable floors. This is the TC three area, which did allow the fifty-five feet over four habitable floors. And this is the TC four area, which allowed for the commercial uses or could allow for vertical mixed use. So a variety of different uses tied to the master concept plan, and depending on the development area label, it set forth the schedule of uses and the property development standards that could occur under that plan. This is the proposed master concept plan, and again, the TC two area is not subject of being amended as part of this request, so they'll retain the same development rights. Here, the TC one area, which is here and here, and here is another area for the parking garage, and I'll go for the parking garage separately, but these areas will range within the applicant's request of fifty-five feet to seventy-five feet to build out. Here, the balance of the residential, which is a hundred and forty units, the hotel rooms, which could be a maximum up to three ninety, and commercial uses to support that request.
Excuse me, could you define where the, what you're recommending, the areas where seventy-five foot is allowed?
For my recommendation, I have another slide for that, so I'll definitely do that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then this is the TC five area, which is fifty-five feet commercial uses where they want to retain their existing development rights at a decreased intensity, but in terms of development standards, they want to retain the same rights. I want to go over surrounding property and compatibility first. The property is surrounded by commercial residential uses. Collier County was a review, well, was extended the opportunity to be a review party as part of this application because of the impacts to Vanderbilt and the neighborhoods. However, I did not receive any responses from their staff, but it, the application was extended to them for review. I've received substantial public comment. We do not purposely flood your inboxes with those, but I do have a copy of those printed out for you if you would like to review. Also, the clerk has provided a copy. Anything that I get via mail or email, I always copy to the city clerk and the city attorney's office. But we've received numerous comments in support, in opposition, a combination of both, so I do have all of those on file. But a lot of the comments that were brought up by the public where there were concerns were relative to the traffic impacts on Bonita Beach Road, Luke Street, and Meadowlark, which we'll address later in our presentation, the increase in the number of hotel rooms, and again, the impacts to Luke and Meadowlark. For compatibility, what was very important to staff, because we do feel like this is a very good use for the corridor, it's complementary and a needed asset, but we wanted to make sure it was compatible with the existing neighborhood and also the existing multifamily that's there. So we are recommending some conditions relative to reduced building height, which is consistent with some of the current entitlements on the property today as it relates to the northern boundary, the eastern boundary, and then some of the buildings that are adjacent to the west. For buffering, we are asking for some increased buffering standards, so Mr. Kirby can explain that. For architectural, we are asking for additional safeguards because the prototype language in the LDC relative to hotels is really not that elaborate, so we feel that it's necessary to have those extra conditions in there so our city architect at time of development order can make sure that we are receiving something that is complementary to that corridor. Seventy-five feet is substantial for Bonita Beach Road, so we just want to make sure it's something that's designed consistent with the visioning and things of that nature, which the applicant is definitely wanting to support our visioning efforts. Management of traffic, we'll go over those in detail, but we were very concerned about how the hotel entrance would operate, so we do have conditions relative to that that I worked with our city engineer on. And then the site-related improvements that we'll go ahead and talk about as it relates to Luke Street and Meadowlark. And again, just so everyone can understand where our concerns about compatibility came from, is here we have a existing commercial, sorry, condominium hotel, it's not a hotel, I'm sorry, condominiums. Here we have some single-family residences that have constructed, have been constructed recently, so it was important for us to make sure that parking structure had primary facade treatments, was limited to thirty-five feet, things of that nature. For this area, while it could be and may be a neighborhood in transition, the redevelopment potential of these properties as currently entitled is only single-family duplex or townhomes at fifty-five feet. And so for us, it was just important to maintain that compatibility and transition the building height from the northern property line in and really concentrate the intensity in a central location or towards Bonita Beach Road. Same reasoning for the eastern boundary line, too. We do have some existing commercial here, but in this neighborhood here, it's single-family or two-family attached homes where their residential plan development limits their height to fifteen feet. So again, just trying to be mindful of the neighborhood. We felt that that wasn't appropriate for the transition amassing.
I have a question. Sorry to interrupt. What is on the southwest corner of Luke and Bonita Beach Road north of there, south?
I believe that is a retail, this one?
I'm sorry, northwest corner.
Northwest, this one?
What is this?
It's a vacant parcel, and I believe it's owned by oil industry. Jay. Omer might know, but...
We've kind of danced around that piece of property all morning.
Do you want to?
I'm sorry, but I...
That's a parcel owned by a Canadian investor named Mr. Ellison. Actually, Andrew, who may not be here anymore, represents him. Mr. Ellison set up a land lease with Exxon in two thousand and two, I believe, a fifteen-year lease at above-market rates. Exxon divested all of their land lease assets to Seven-Eleven about eight years ago or so, but because Seven-Eleven already has a franchise down the road, they, due to franchise laws, they can't actually develop it, so they just have to pay Mr. Ellison a land lease fee every year until February of two thousand and eighteen. So February of two thousand and eighteen, that parcel there will be vacant and...
Comes available. Thank you for that clarification. Sorry.
Okay, so this probably gets into your question about the height conditions proposed by staff, and this is the applicant's, Omer has worked great with me to help address my concerns and put them to paper, and so I asked him to provide me an exhibit based on the revised master concept plan to show me with the buildings, what exactly, what actually to scale are the distances? So I really know and I can convey my message, because originally, the previous master concept plan in July had building numbers, so it was easy for me to say, buildings X, Y, and Z can't exceed fifty-five feet, but in this plan, the building labels have been removed. So I wanted to go ahead and get an accurate representation of what those distances are. So what you'll see here is, again, TC area two, what exists, so two stories over parking, four stories over parking, three stories over parking, and then two stories over parking. And then again, for staff, this hotel building, we are recommending, we acknowledge the seventy-five feet that they are wishing to construct, but we want it subject to the architectural standards that we have set forth and conditioned for. Same with this building here along Bonita Beach Road as well. This L-shaped building here, what I wanted to do was to take a distance from the northern boundary line, a hundred and fifty feet this way, so anything in this area here cannot exceed fifty-five feet. Again, just as a logical transitional amassing component, because this building is two stories over parking, it couldn't exceed thirty-five feet. So it was just the logic of thirty-five feet, okay, we'll step it up to fifty-five feet for this section of the building. Same with this building here, it measures a hundred and eighteen feet from the eastern property line to the edge of the building, so that is why staff is recommending that a hundred and eighteen feet eastern of the property line is subject to the fifteen, sorry, the fifty-five-foot height limitation. I also wanted to explain the building separation, which I need to make a little clarification, and I'll work with Audrey on that, where I want to revise, and it's on page nineteen, to replace the development area with buildings, want to clarify that condition. But the intent of the building separation was, I wanted to, again, protect these buildings here in TC two from any increase in height above fifty-five feet, because the development standards that they're proposing is a twenty-foot building separation. But if you want to go above fifty-five feet, staff was asking that the separation be half the height of the tallest building that it's adjacent to. So if this part of the building was seventy-five feet, I wanted to ensure that this building separation was thirty-seven point five feet. So it will be dictated at time of site development order when they really know how tall the buildings are going to be architecturally, how they're going to be designed.
Excuse me one second. Bob and Serp, for the record, you're going along with fifty-five feet, am I correct?
That is staff's recommendation.
That's it, staff recommendation, okay, thank you.
For those, just for those sections.
Right.
Not entirely, but just...
Right.
So fifty-five feet from the northern boundary...
Hundred and sixty feet.
To a hundred and fifty feet. A hundred and eighteen feet from the eastern boundary and fifty-five feet, parking structure at thirty-five feet. Everything else, we're in agreement with the applicant. Consistency with the Bonita plan, there is an analysis contained in your staff report regards to the height, they are correct. The comprehensive plan does allow a maximum of seventy-five feet in this category, but again, just because it's the maximum, it's the up to, you still have to look at compatibility as well, which goes into policy one point one two two, so I can explain that later. The allowable uses, again, staff agrees that this is a great opportunity for a hotel and things, it's definitely would be an asset to this area, but we want to make sure that it's compatible with the existing multifamily and the neighborhoods to the north and the east. Because albeit, if Omer does not decide to develop this property, the zoning entitlements run with the land, so there's no guarantee that someone is responsible and with the vision of the applicant will stay because the zoning goes with the land. Again, general commercial, hotel uses are appropriate, multifamily is appropriate, commercial uses are inappropriate, so it is consistent with that policy. Compatibility, we found that it was consistent based on our conditions relative to the height decreases along the northern and eastern boundaries. Concurrentcy and availability of public services, for the most part, the infrastructure and the public facilities will be in place at time of local development order. Transportation concurrency is an item that, as you were privy to today, Bonita Beach Road is a main topic of discussion, and it also is for our city council as well as the quadrant. So the city is currently in process of doing some studies on the quadrant and Bonita Beach Road visioning, and we're hoping that those areas would eventually be implemented through our capital improvement plans to help with the capacity issues on Bonita Beach Road. But state statute, based on two thousand and eleven, cannot, or sorry, states that we cannot deny a project solely based on a lack of level of service on Bonita Beach Road. Okay? You can deny a project for other reasons, but transportation is not one of them. So you'll see in the transportation conditions, as Ms. Montgomery outlined, there is a proportionate fair share condition that we are working on with the applicant.
Okay.
I have Mr. Kirby available, if he wants to quickly discuss the environmental components of the site.
Sure.
Be very quick.
Okay, just this, just that one, okay. Mike Kirby, Senior Environmental Specialist, Community Development Department. All right, we had some gopher tortoises there, about nineteen, if you use the calculation, are expected to be there, and the amount of preserve that was supposed to be there per hour indigenous preserve area is three point one acres. There are too many gopher tortoises to put into this small preserve area, so many of them would have to be moved off-site. And then secondly, what we looked at was the fact that this is an urban corridor, okay, and it's supposed to be developed, okay? Do we want preserves there, indigenous preserves? Open space may be a better use of urban corridor, but preserve area may not, okay? And then, thirdly, if you do preserve areas, you want larger contiguous areas. This was three point one, it's not connected to anything. So, long story short, we were okay with mitigating off-site. Our comp plan does have a policy that says you can mitigate off-site, one-to-one ratio. We agreed with the applicant, and we gave them conditions, two conditions. One is to purchase three point one acres of xeric scrub habitat or higher, and the second option is to figure out an amount of money it would cost to purchase that amount of land and maintain it and do monitoring studies for seven years, and then pay a fee in lieu. And we've already set up a mitigation fund. We've done this once before at Diamond Oaks in the northern part of Bonita Springs. So moving things along rather quickly, okay? Secondly, was the landscape buffering along Bonita Beach Road and the northern boundary. Along Bonita Beach Road, we have language that says you shall use enhanced landscaping there. So what we do is either increase the number of plants or the height, depending on, you know, the height of the building, or if it's a parking lot, you want a larger shrub, we try to use some good judgment and figure out what's best for that site. So we have a condition to help satisfy the Bonita Beach Road enhanced buffer, and in the northern boundary, we have the palms, large palms, that are going to be used thirty-foot or greater with sixteen-foot trees, which we set as a condition to help with the view corridor. PK Studios did some diagrams in there, trying to depict the buffering needed to produce that effect, so we created a condition that would satisfy or promote a buffer that would buffer pretty much most of the buildings there. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions?
You didn't talk about the oak trees. Could you talk about the oak?
There are some, there are some small xeric oak trees there, but I don't believe they're already heritage trees, you know, twenty inches in diameter or greater. Kim, do you remember? No, I don't, there weren't any there.
Okay.
Well, there's a large section in the staff report about mitigating finding a new site, the developer buying the site, or what is the status of, how's that going to work?
That, I tried to go over that with the three point one acres of open space, which is required to be indigenous, okay? So in this case, it makes better sense to mitigate off-site than to make a little three point one acre preserve, so they have two options to do that. And number one would be to do a, buy three point one acres and have it maintained and monitored for seven years, and then number two is a fee in lieu. We figure out the amount of money needed to purchase and maintain and monitor three point one acres, and then write a check to the city of Bonita, and it would be put in a mitigation fund, which we've done once before.
And Mike, just for the record, this is Neil, that's condition eight.
Condition eight?
Condition...
I had condition nine, or wait a minute. Condition deviation, condition open space, deviation ten.
Page twenty.
Condition eight, deviation ten.
Okay. I just wanted to know where it was in case there was questions, so that, thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Can I just ask Mike one or two questions real quick?
Yes.
Talk of xeric oak, is that a specific species, or are you talking about myrtle oak or sand live oak? What type of species are we talking about?
Well, probably Quercus geminata, sand live oak.
Sand live oak.
And there's a community of them, and then our flux code did specify a certain area. That's how come we can specify you need to mitigate for xeric oak. It's in our comprehensive plan as one of the rare and significant habitats to protect, so they cannot buy pine flatwoods to mitigate for this area. We want our xeric oak community to be mitigated for.
So these oaks, so you're not, when you use the term xeric oak, you're bundling in group of oaks for that type of ecosystem, you're not referring to a specific species?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had, is there any threatened or endangered plants or animals related to that xeric oak habitat, specifically currently at that location?
There was one, and that's the gopher tortoises.
Okay. And those can be moved?
Right. We have a process in place for that.
Any other questions here for Mr. Kirby while he's up here? Thank you, Mike.
For the record, Tom Ross, traffic engineer with the city of Bonita Springs. All right, I'm just going to quickly go through some of these items. I think the conditions reflect that the applicant has submitted a TIS in, which is provided in the staff report. The traffic concurrency at this point has not been demonstrated, and as you know, that you can't deny this project based on traffic concurrency alone. I just want to make sure that that's clearly stated. One of the things that I wanted to point out during Ted Trisha's testimony, he mentioned that with the project that build out, the level of service for Bonita Beach Road would be level of service C. What Mr. Trish did not mention was that that level of service did not include all the vested trips of development that has already been approved. There will be approximately four hundred additional trips during the peak hour in the peak season that will be generated from development that has not yet been built, but that has already been approved by the city. Once that traffic is added on, the level of service with the existing traffic alone will be right at the capacity of roadway, which is one thousand nine hundred and sixty peak hour trips in the peak direction during peak season.
And what is, is that E?
That is level of service E, yes, sir.
Right. So the comment previously that it was C is confusing.
It is confusing. That, his, Mr. Trisha's comment is, does not include, his analysis did not include the background, or the vested trips, vested development. When you add those trips on, it does bring it up to level of service E conditions.
And the potential impact of this project would make it F, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It would bring that level of service above the maximum capacity of the roadway, correct.
Bob and Serp, for the record, this wouldn't be acceptable in any, in any shape, manner, or form then, if we go by that, if we go by those numbers.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, I believe in the, in the conditions, we have included, under section eleven, under transportation conditions, understanding that the city will be entering into a proportionate fair share agreement with the applicant at the time of development order. The conditions under section eleven outline the information that the applicant will need to provide in the traffic impact statement at the time of development order in order for us to evaluate what that level of impact is, so that the proper proportionate fair share can be addressed and calculated correctly. So all the information there, under, particularly under section eleven C, all the items listed in eleven C and eleven D, as well as E, will address all of those items and give us all the analysis that we need to analyze what improvements need to be made related to site-specific improvements or site-related improvements, and as well as determine just how far over capacity this development will bring Bonita Beach Road, so that the proper proportionate fair share contribution can be determined.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Montgomery has a question.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Ross, does the city use the administrative code regarding transportation methodology that they inherited from the county?
I'll answer that if...
For the record, Jaclyn Jensen, chapter four does state that we are to review zoning requests for the traffic with the applicable administrative code, which would default to the county, because we defer to our city attorney, we never adopted our own administrative code for traffic, for traffic studies at zoning, but based on the interpretation of a policy in our charter, we are supposed to follow those guidelines. But there's other language in that guideline where we can ask for additional information... in that guideline where we can ask for additional information over a certain threshold, in certain, certain circumstances. And we felt to fully evaluate this project because of the potential impact, it does have Bonita Beach Road, that additional analysis was required. And we are also in the process, as we speak, doing council one-on-ones to update our traffic impact statement guidelines, because we are not Lee County, and we have different needs. And this is something that needs, needs to be done, especially as Bonita Beach Road is over-capacity, and we no longer can deny projects solely on concurrency.
And I don't dispute the fact that they're looking at changing the methodology. However, there is an adopted methodology, and the TIS that was submitted is consistent with that. Mr. Ross, do you know whether or not, as part of that methodology, that applicants are required to use a historic growth rate in order to increase traffic over time?
I don't recall exactly what the wording is. My, my recollection is that it either requires a growth rate, or it requires that traffic from approved development be included in that analysis.
Okay. Let's take your statement, that is an either-or. So we use the historic growth rate. If you were to use the historic growth rate and add on vested trips, you are double-counting the traffic that's going to occur on a going-forward basis, aren't you?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Could you explain that a little further?
Yes, absolutely. When I mentioned that there's, that the vested traffic was not included in that analysis, if you do not increase existing traffic by using a growth rate, and you add on the, the traffic from vested development, you will still be at capacity, and, and the additional trips from this development will increase that to above-capacity conditions.
Regardless of how you count it, whether you double-count, as she mentioned or not.
Correct. So without doub, double-counting, it would still be over-capacity.
Okay. Richard Donley, for the record, maybe you can answer this, this question. But when we looked at this a month ago, and read the staff report that was presented to us at that time, the staff had reckon, had not recommended approval of this, of this project. Today, they do recommend approval of this project. So I guess my question is, I guess I suspect the answer lies somewhere in this legislative two thousand and eleven change, which means that maybe we've been doing everything wrong since two thousand and eleven. Could somebody bring us up to date, just, just where this, this legislative change, how it was introduced, what it means, what, what are the options? Is there appeals?
It's getting crowded up here.
Yes, sir.
John Dolmert, for the record. The previous recommendation was based upon a discussion with the applicant, and the staff report was recommending denial, because it was requested of us to make our recommendation based upon the proposal without additional conditions. And based upon that criteria, we recommended denial. A discussion took place after the continuance was ordered, that said, let's go back and take a look at things and discuss conditions. And at that point, those conditions were, were then at least discussed, I won't say all agreed upon, and the recommendation was, was changed. It was not because our view of the application was different, it was the conditions that were associated with our recommendations were then included.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you talk, tell us a little bit more about the Florida statute now, and just?
I can, but I think you probably want to hear from the, the transportation engineer.
Okay.
Okay.
Does this mean that, that going back to two thousand and eleven, that any applicant who was denied because of traffic has some kind of right, going back?
I'm, I'm afraid I'm not qualified to answer that. That's a legal question.
From a legal perspective, it's a legal question, and only if they entered and they did a good faith effort to enter into a proportionate fair share agreement. The statute, however, does not have much language as to the contents of a proportionate fair share agreement. And the city of Bonita Springs, when this changed, and it actually predates two thousand and eleven, because I remember Mr. Leroux was involved in this, we adopted a proportionate fair share agreement provision, so that we could have terms. And that section is the one cited to where, one of the provisions of it, and if it pleases Ms. Montgomery, I'll be happy to put more of those provisions in the, in the requirements there, so that it's very clear that both the statute, concurrency statute, as well as the proportionate fair share agreement funding methodology is adhered to, not just the one section that says the city can amend the CIP if it's not in there already.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, what I would like to do, and I'll, I'll try to do this quickly to respect time, because this, this room is apparently booked at two o'clock for another meeting. I wanted to go over the conditions of approval, just real quickly for the record, and then this would be the opportunity for staff and the applicant to present our areas of disagreement for certain conditions, and for the board to discuss at their leisure. Regarding conditions one and two, it's conditions relative to density and intensity for the project. Schedule of uses of development standards is condition three. And again, that was, this is being done because there's an adjustment in the development areas of the TC tracks, and also the elimination of some of those development areas on the master concept plan. They also proposing to add some minor changes to the schedule uses, as well as eliminate some uses that are no longer applicable based on the amended master concept plan. What we need to do, Neil and Wayne, and I'll get with Audrey, is on the schedule uses, you'll see under the TC one through TC five, we do need to add TC five to the hotel line item, based on the last-minute revision that was not included. And thank you, Mr. Worster, for bringing that to our attention. Continuation of condition three, again, this is the one area of disagreement between the applicant and staff, is how far does that fifty-five-foot height limitation go in terms of the northern boundary and the eastern boundary? So again, I would like to correct an item in the staff report on page seven. The applicant is not in agreement on the eastern property development limitation of one hundred and eighteen feet for fifty-five-foot high buildings. So I wanted to correct that on the record. That was an inaccurate statement in the staff report, and I do apologize for that. What the applicant is requesting is fifty-five feet for any portion of a building within seventy-five feet of the northern property line, and then thirty-five feet for the eastern property line. And as I explained in this exhibit here, staff does, does not support the applicant's request. We are recommending, again, fifty-five feet, subject to one hundred and fifty foot, one hundred and fifty feet from the northern property line, and then one hundred and eighteen from the eastern property line. So that, that is staff's recommendation, and that could be something for the, that will be something for the board to discuss and provide their input and recommendation on.
Excuse me. For the record, Roger Brunswick, is it one hundred and fifty feet? I thought we, one hundred and sixty feet was mentioned earlier, or I misunderstood?
I believe I always said one hundred and fifty feet, but.
Okay. And it is one hundred and eighteen feet from the eastern boundary?
Correct. My, my, again, my intent is to reach the, the edge of this building envelope.
Got you.
And then here, while this measures one hundred and forty feet, I wanted to make the setback consistent with the edge of this building envelope. So it's approximately one hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. And while you're on that, what happens to the top of the, or the corner of the, where it goes from fifty-five feet to seventy-five feet? That, that corner there is fifty-five feet, correct?
That is staff's recommendation.
So there's a transition to seventy-five feet somewheres on the elevation?
Correct. Somewhere in here, that's where the change would occur.
Thank you.
And again, for aerial purposes, this is the existing residential neighborhood to the east of Meadowlark, and the single-family duplex dwelling units to the northern boundary, and then this building here being two stories over parking. So that is staff's reasoning and justification. And again, it's based on previous zoning approvals to establish compatibility with the adjacent uses. So again, that's our justification, and we feel that's necessary for compatibility purposes. Architectural, I do have Sam Vincent here, the city architect, regarding the conditions. The reason why staff would like to go ahead and refer to the renderings, and also have the language in here about the void to mass relationships, use of balconies, and architectural treatments of that, is that the hotel prototype section of our land development code, in our opinion, doesn't really have enough detail for us to support something that is so significant to Bonita Beach Road, especially when Bonita Beach Road already has a height limitation of fifty-five feet, and you need to request a deviation to go above fifty-five feet. So those conditions and the renderings gave staff the level of comfort to conceptually approve of, of this project, for them to review later at time of local development order, realizing that we have the Bonita Beach Road visioning study going at the same time, and that we can incorporate those as well. As I know the applicant is also very anxious to incorporate those, those visioning recommendations as well. But again, you can see with the hotel building being on this side of Bonita Beach Road, is you could see the variation amassing that's conceptually captured in this rendering. And we just want to make sure that we truly get that type of product and that image. So we felt that those architectural conditions were necessary to provide us some safeguards at time of local development order, in addition to the prototype standards in the land development code. And actually, the multifamily standards, the prototype, that prototype building has more references to other parts of the code that have bigger safeguards. And this is, the hotel will be right on Bonita Beach Road, so we really want those standards, those extra safeguards. Again, that's to reiterate why we want to keep those, those standards. The management of traffic condition, that's condition six. Again, worked with the city engineer on that, to require the use of valet, valet flagmen, especially during high registration and peak events. If there is an event at the hotel, whether it be a wedding, a seminar, conference, things of that nature, just to make sure there's a free flow of traffic and no queuing at this whole area. I mean, staff was very concerned at the hotel portage entrance. We worked very hard with the applicant to make sure that there was enough room for, for cars to, to park in, drop off, valet to take them in and out, go to the garage. So this was not an easy discussion for staff. And you'll see conditions relative to Meadowlark for our engineer, through our, our engineering staff, and as well through the valet, because we are concerned with how it is going to work, and it is contingent on how many rooms they really can build, which we won't know until development order. What I would like to possibly entertain Neil and Wayne, is to possibly consider adding an additional condition for no hotel-through traffic on Luke and Meadowlark. I don't know if the applicant's up to that, but again, another point that was brought to our attention, which does make sense to help protect traffic going into these neighborhoods. Again, it's hotel traffic for truck deliveries. We can't control what the permanent residents do during season and use quails walk, but I mean, that's the least we could offer in terms of additional signage at Luke Street and Meadowlark, to address some of those concerns for traffic intrusion. Consumption on-premise is a, a condition in the staff report for outdoor consumption, and mainly that's for the resort pool area. So you'll see conditions relative to that for hours of operation, no live, no live outdoor entertainment, and capacity be set by the fire marshal. Environmental, Mr. Kirby went over those already in the staff report, and also in this presentation. Landscaping, he also went into. Conditions E and D are carryovers from the two thousand and seven zoning ordinance. We felt those were still applicable and important to keep. For the engineering comments and conditions, we added a condition relative to our water quality treatment standards that are in our comprehensive plan. The project does have a storm water management system that's a vaulted system, so that's why you don't see any dried attention ponds or anything like that on the master concept plans, because the water treatment system is actually underneath the ground. So a very complicated, expensive system. Again, in that condition ten, you'll see conditions relative to Luke Street and safe pedestrian and vehicular access at the Luke Street, where the main hotel entrance is, and the parking structure. And we anticipate there might be a South Florida Water Management District modification permit to the vaulted system based on the new plan of some sort. But again, that's a engineering detail item. Transportation condition eleven, essentially, as Mr. Ross explained, this is really going to be our bread and butter at time of local development order, when they really know what they're going to build, where we can analyze the project and its impacts at an intersection level, trip distribution, link analysis, the proportionate fair share. And then two, hopefully at that time, the city will have formal recommendations by council to proceed with the Bonita Beach Road visioning study, and also the quadrant study. You'll see that condition, which is the last condition of the transportation section, that the applicant is definitely supportive of the city's efforts in the visioning process in the quadrant. Condition eleven F is where we are agreeing to disagree. That's really more so for Audrey to opine on. Ms. Vance? Okay. So this might be an item, this is the transportation condition eleven F, which really goes into the proportionate fair share conditions. And really, condition eleven F was drafted because there is no capacity available at build-out for this project, and this applicant will not be responsible for paying for the existing deficiencies, but just their project's impact on the network. And right now, we are currently going through the Bonita Beach Road visioning study, which may have alternative enhancements to Bonita Beach Road versus what's adopted in the county's six-to-ten-year CIP. So with that in mind, this section of the LDC allows us to approve a project, and if the, if the improvements are not programmed in our CIP, we have then a certain timeframe where we have to make it a part of our CIP. So that is the, that is why that section of the code is referenced.
May I ask a question? I'm a little confused about what we're going to be voting on eventually. I see the staff recommendation and the applicant's recommendation, which are different. When this comes to a vote, do we go back and say what we want to do as a zoning board?
Let me go through a little bit. The way I read the applicant's condition, and Ms. Montgomery and I are probably close in opinion, but just not close enough. And the applicant's position is one where, hey, city, you need to program your CIP, so we have certainty in what we provide, you know, what we're required to provide. Well, the problem about proportionate fair share is we don't necessarily know what they are to provide, what impacts, because some of our projects may or may not be included because of development, like Bonita Village. There's some policy questions that council needs to resolve, that they have not resolved yet. We're in the middle of the quadrant study, we're involved in the vision study. We have taken certain projects out of our CIP. The county has not acknowledged some projects to be out of our CIP at this point. So there's a lot of flux in this area. Now, what was nice was when we adopted our transportation funding section, and like I mentioned earlier, Mr. Leroux was the one involved in that, there was language in there that said, hey, if you have a development, and this is the language that you see two-dash-one-thirty-seven B, it says, you know, the city can later add things to it and have that included in there at its, you know, next time it's financially feasible CIP, so that we can have something set up into that. But some of these projects, I don't know what council's going to say. We're in the middle of budget right now. I don't know exactly what council wants to add in there, and I certainly do not want to foreclose or preclude council from being able to add, by adding language that is just consistent with the state statute, and it has to be things that are programmed as of today. I think that snapshot is very, very narrow-sided and will cause problems. Now, with that being said, I don't have a problem in modification of transportation condition, maybe not necessarily eleven F, but inside eleven, adding in that any proportionate fair share must be in accordance with one-sixty-three-thirty-one-eighty and the full section of the transportation funding. must be in accordance with 163-3180 and the full section of the transportation funding, which I believe starts at 2-135.
If I might, Audrey said what I think, but if I could, Neil Montgomery for the record, I'd like to say what I think, because I'm not quite sure it's accurate. One, if you asked a question earlier about what the state statute says, and I have it here with me, what it says is, if you have a road that's failing, you have two choices. Program an improvement in your CIP, or you call it constrained. I'll give you an example of constrained road is Daniels. Lee County has adopted in their comprehensive plan, and they've determined that road's going to be constrained. And so it has a different set of rules about what happens when you have additional traffic. It's a volume-to-capacity ratio, which Ted can explain, and I can't. At the present time, the city hasn't done either of those things. So you have a road that they submit failing, but there are no programmed improvements, and it's not called constrained. I'm not really pursuing that issue, but that's part of the problem, how, why your life is being complicated. Now, what the statute does say is, if a road's failing with or without us, they're correct. You can't deny it, particularly when you haven't done anything to fix the problem. You can't say, well, we're not going to call it constrained, and we're not going to put it in the CIP, but you can't go, you can't do that. And so what the statute says is, to help the local government avoid liability, which is what you're doing here, you have to let the project proceed under a proportionate share, fair share agreement. We're agreeing to pay a proportionate share. Where I think the only disagreement is, is one part of a sentence in F. And the reason is, is because you have Section 3-137 through 3-142 of your code that deals with proportionate fair share agreement. In that subparagraf, you refer only to a very small portion of one section of that. My opinion is, you have a whole section that describes how you fairly do this in accordance with the statute. I think you should indicate compliance with the whole thing, because all the words in here matter. That's what I'm asking you to do. Don't just call out 3-137 perent F. Call out the whole code section that applies in this case and in accordance with the statute, because if we don't follow all the rules, we've got a problem. Go back to, this is all being done to help the local government avoid liability. I don't want to have a fight with you guys later. Let just say, we're going to comply with all the rules, and then I think we solved the problem.
And can we solve it by doing what Ms. Montgomery says, but also in condition 11F, be very clear that we're referencing funds may be added to the five-year CIP in accordance with?
And that's part of this.
And that's one of the tasks before council at this point.
Staff and council need to change the CIP, of course, to add in the new projects, and they're in the process of the planning phase.
And how we're going to deal with it going forward, correct? Okay.
And just so you have comfort, the way this is written, we can't get a local development order until we execute that proportionate fair share agreement. So the problem isn't going to happen until a lot of answers are arrived at in accordance with the rules, I hope.
I'd like to ask one more question. Relative to that law, where you can't deny if a road is already failing, okay? So someone can come in here and ask for a thousand rooms, two thousand rooms, and we couldn't deny it, because that really, really, really overloads the system.
Nothing you can't deny, you can't deny it based on transportation.
Very good, thank you.
Well, that's your question.
All right, for the record, Jaclyn Gensen, and I believe just to over-arguably explain how I think we need to approach the conditions where there are areas of disagreement. Once we're ready to discuss the case after public comment, we can go condition by condition where there is disagreement, and we can ask for your recommendation.
All right.
Okay.
So you want to, we'll continue along.
Which brings us to another condition that we're. Since the issuance of the staff report, Jay Sweet, who's one of our planners, and Audrey have been working on a revised shuttle condition. And it's not that we don't support what the applicant is doing with the shuttle condition. It's just that if we're really going to provide a reduction in trips or things of that nature, we want it to be based on the shuttle studies. So I'll bring up Jay, just to explain the reasoning behind the suggestive revisions. So this is different than what's in your staff report, okay?
Good afternoon, for the record, Jay Sweet, Community Development. In broad strokes, part of this has to do with proportional fair share. There's no doubt that, assuming they choose the option to submit a shuttle study at time of local development order, that that could have a significant impact on the number of trips that impact the road, and that number of trips would reduce their impact on the road and thereby reduce their proportionate fair share amount, which is good for everybody. But the question is, what happens if the shuttle system doesn't work? If it fails, if a new operator takes over and decides not to use it? Their original proposal was that it would be a thousand-dollar fine. And nothing is the applicant, because I think it was sincere in their proposal, but that's a little ridiculous, because it costs more than that to run each shuttle each month. And so if somebody, if a new operator was to take over, and they made the decision, hey, it's cheaper to pay the penalty than run the service, they could do that. And that's not what we're looking for. But what we are looking for, to be fair, and this is about fairness to both the city and the applicant, is if we were to identify, and let's just say, I'm going to use a ludicrous number here, but let's just say that it reduced their fair share proportional contribution by a hundred dollars. That over a ten-year period, they would pretty sure, if they guarantees that, if for some reason they didn't do that, the city's not out not getting the proportional fair share. But they surely would reduce over a ten-year period, 10% each year, to show that the operation continues and to show that it's going to continue on. Ten years out, could somebody abandon it? Sure. I don't think that that's likely. And the reason I don't think it's likely is that if the business is successful, they're using the shuttle, they're going to continue to use the shuttle. But it gives the city a comfort level to ensure that if for some reason it's abandoned in year two, the city isn't on the hook for improvements that should have been in proportional fair share. On the other hand, it also gives the city, more importantly, and like I said, I think they were sincere in their offer, you know, to penalize us. But the penalty is such that there are operators who just come in and say, here's your check, city, I'm not running the shuttle this month. Here's your check, city, I'm not running the shuttle this month. In which case, there's no benefit to the city. So this was an idea that we came up with to create a win-win. It is a little more difficult, the other, but from a city perspective, the penalty's difficult, because how do we enforce that? How do we go after code enforcement? Do we have to have a hearing? This becomes a surety that just sits there, and rather than insurtrys that we get normally that go up each year, this is one that would go down each year until it was depleted.
And let me just add, my office is not equipped to deal with the collection and enforcement of a fine that's not generated through an ordinance, it's not a special act or special zoning. So it would be a novel entertainment or novel legal theory that could create some additional problems.
Okay, I have a comment, Jay, with respect to what you pointed out. You flip forward two slides, you'll get to about the thousand-dollar fine. I'd like to suggest you, to solve the problem of somebody just paying a thousand dollars, subject to a daily fine of one thousand dollars. That would get their attention and get something done.
Sure would.
Because I agree, a thousand dollars is meaningless when a guy was paid not to have to do it.
Yeah, our concern, and it is, our concern was twofold. And if I was in their shoes, I would do the exact same thing. The shuttle study, there are some studies out there that aren't exactly on point. It could have a significant reduction in their traffic impact, based upon some studies that I looked at that aren't exactly on point, because they're in different settings, and they're like LA and San Diego and so forth. But realizing that, what we don't want is for the city to give up that proportional fair share amount on an unknown quantity. And the surety would guarantee that the city's protected. I think run properly, it'll work fine. In which case, the applicant, the surety goes away, that happens. The thing is about, the penalty is, again, going after and enforcing it, and I'll leave that to Audrey, because that becomes, the city attorney's office having to go to collect that thousand-dollar day fine and take him to court and all the costs involved with that. I agree with you that that, a huge penalty grabs someone's attention, but I'll leave it to the collection agent of how that has to work.
And that creates another problem, too. Excessive fines are usually kicked at, you know, when the government tries to charge an excessive fine, and we have some experience in this. Those fines, the courts will find, and that happens a lot with liquidated damages clauses. If a fine is too excessive, that part of the contract is stricken out. So whether it's liquidated damages, whether it's fines, there's very sufficient case law explaining why you cannot do this, and that's why the surety method is a preferred approach.
Neil Montgomery for the record, I think I can actually simplify this. I don't have any problem with the staff condition. What the staff condition relates to, I don't disagree with Jay. If we're going to reduce the proportionate share we just talked about by virtue of the shuttle service, we have to do all those things. I don't make a problem with that. I think we are on different paths. What we were trying to say is, regardless of whether or not we're going to try to adjust the proportionate share, we should do a shuttle service. So we were actually talking, both are about shuttle service, but two different things. So you can leave the staff language in, and that's fine. But if you think regardless of whether we try to adjust the proportionate fair share, we should have a shuttle service, then maybe we need to still add another sentence in.
And you have, are you in position to suggest the other sentence to be added?
Yeah, I think.
What's your thoughts, I guess?
Do we have a copy of what the proposal is on the surety?
No. Well, that's our language up there. See, I was trying to obligate us to do a minimum of four shuttles, 30 hours a week. So that first sentence, we could add in, you know, as D, and then we. Am I making sense? I mean, because.
No. Well, I under, and this is just in the beginning. This is all subject to changes as business picks up, but.
Yes, the answer is, if we do this as part of the proportionate share analysis, there's going to be a study that's going to say how many and when and all that, and you have to do that all the time. But they don't have to do an adjustment to the proportionate share study based on the shuttle.
I understand.
So.
Okay, that I understand.
So they could end up not doing a shuttle then, and I think.
Hang on, also, can I just, one, reject one point? This is Omer Dorr for the record. So a surety, you have just as difficult a time collecting, because you still have to go through a process to actually collect on that surety. It doesn't, it's not just handed to you. To Mr. Worster's point, the initial wording there of the thousand dollars, we'd mentioned that in a much earlier meeting also, and in that meeting, we were very, I made sure that that everyone was having a difficult time trying to come up with what that penalty is, and we'd be very open to any extreme penalty, because again, our intent is to absolutely do this. So if the penalty, instead of a surety, ends up being something where it's a very high monthly fee, we really aren't opposed to that at all. It's something we'd embrace, so.
Something I'd like to add, I think, because, and then Roger Brunswick for the record. The shuttle is not to alleviate traffic congestion on Benita Beach Road. It is as much a convenience, as I understand it, to your hospital, to your hotel guests.
Yes.
And getting them around, because you talk, whether it'll ever happen, come to pass that you'll have a car-free society in your hotel, I don't really think that's going to happen. But to whatever extent you can take people off of the street and utilize the shuttle will be a benefit to your guests. And I think that's as important as the impact of traffic on Beach Road.
If I may, Jay Sweet again. I think from a staff perspective, we're, we have apples and oranges, or as Ms. Montgomery said, we're on two different levels at the same time. If the purpose of the shuttle study is to reduce the traffic volumes, it reduces the proportional fair share, then I think the surety is the way to go. If it is a convenience factor and a selling factor for their business, and they're not trying to use it to reduce their TIS or the impacts or any of that analysis, I don't know that we should necessarily get involved in it, because that's his business to run. It either fails or wins. So I'm looking at it from a perspective of protecting the city against something that may happen if they use it to reduce their proportional fair share or reduce their impact. But if they're doing it as a service, I don't know that necessarily the city needs to be interjecting itself in that end. That's just my opinion on it.
Okay.
For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, just to get to go over the conditions. Lee County DOT conditions are contained in 13. Most of it pertains to right-of-way permitting that will be necessary. The CND remain as originally approved, and I'll work with the applicant in Lee County DOT to address the TC5 concerns that Mr. DeSavo brought up. And then the other conditions outline the ordinance are just our typical conditions that we put in place in most of our planned developments regarding noise control, the U.S. Green Building Coalition certification, our LEED standards, and then our typical boilerplate standards for local development order, where just because you get your zoning doesn't mean you obtain your local development order. You still have to comply with the land development code. Again, to go over the additional voluntary conditions that the applicant offered to us, it's providing your backup under the revised application documents. And these are the, there's five conditions that they're asking, or that they voluntarily offered to provide into the zoning ordinance, and I'll just go over them. But the shuttle service, again, we addressed in our condition 12. Condition two, we added that wording into the architectural standards. Condition three, again, we acknowledge that within the visioning and the quadrant study effort, so that's in the traffic condition. Item number four, we feel that's more appropriate as a separate petition, whether or not the applicant wants to petition a vacate Luke Street or not. We just didn't feel it was appropriate to address in this zoning application. There's separate review processes for those. And then number five is, again, the analysis of the shuttle study, which, you know, for staff's concerns, was really addressed in condition 12.
Jackie? Backing up a second, this is Jim Worster. Are you saying in your letter that you will donate right-of-way for any improvement that's going to be required at Vanderbilt Beach Road? And Vanderbilt, Benita Beach Road and Vanderbilt Road, if a roundabout goes in there, for example, will you donate right-of-way?
For the record, this is Wayne Arnold, and that statement regarding the Luke Street was actually if the city chose to vacate Luke Street at some point, we would work with them on the vacation of it. I don't know if that's still on the table.
No, I'm talking about the beautification of the intersection.
Yeah, and I don't think we know the full extent of what those beautification efforts are. We've got an existing turn lane that's going to be possibly extended to satisfy access on Luke Street. We don't control the other quadrant of the intersection. You heard from Mr. Dorr that we don't control that. So I mean, I don't know that we're the portion that right-of-way might be granted. I think we were talking more in terms of beautification enhancements with buffers and vegetation and sidewalks and things of that nature.
I'm just asking, in your, on the northeast corner of Luke Street, where you're going to be, you have control of the right-of-way. If they put a roundabout in there, would you donate the right-of-way to?
We answered that way.
On your part, for your portion of the right-of-way that would be affected.
I don't believe Lee County allows roundabouts in arterial roads, so I don't know that I think that's going to ever happen.
I think that's something they're considering on the visionary study.
This is a different situation.
Yeah, it's still the county's road, and the county still has a complaint that says we don't put roundabouts in arterials.
I totally disagree with that. We can put roundabouts on there if it's approved by everybody. And it's a possibility that one may go in there.
So, I, I'm sorry. So we don't know, we, without having the full visioning study done, obviously, we can't go ahead and. obviously, we can't go ahead and commit to a specific amount of land or anything else to give up. But I have been one of the biggest proponents for that new visioning study. I've spoken personally to everyone at Tool Design. I've gone around and gotten local businesses on Benita Beach Road to try to be a part of that. And we're actually right now creating the Benita Merchant Association, Benita Beach Merchant Association for that. I think that a roundabout at that corner would be a huge benefit to our project. And what I've said from day one is, once Tool has that vision design, I mean, I think right now, they're not even sure if the bike lanes will be on the south or the north side of the road, so it's really undefined. It's a huge benefit to our project. If it requires, if to make that pedestrian walkway more viable, we need to give up some land, we'd certainly be happy to look at that. And if to make a pretty roundabout, sometimes you can make a roundabout more attractive by making it slightly bigger and doing an artistic piece in the middle, but that might require some additional lands on the side. That certainly goes really right in line with our intent for that corner. So while we obviously can't commit to something today since the city doesn't, can't describe to us what it is that they actually want us to commit to, we, the intent there is absolutely to go along with that. And if it's necessary to give up some of that land.
I'll take that as a, as a we will donate the right-of-way.
Just quickly, I've just been handed a note that we're not under any time constraint to vacate the room at two o'clock, as previously had been stated. Only because you're handsome, Carl.
All right, for the record, Jaclyn Gensen. I just want to go over the deviations for the record, which is in your staff report packets. And there is a new one that we'll go over at the very end, just as a matter of a housekeeping item. Deviation one was withdrawn. Deviation two is previously approved for screening loading areas in vertical mixed-use buildings. This is essentially what that deviation was for. Deviation three was withdrawn. Deviation four is previously approved and is needed because it's an existing condition for the R1 development area. So that deviation needs to remain. Deviation five, what you'll see through the strike through and underline is, we have codified our code since the 2007 zoning ordinance was approved. So this represents just a change in the code section based on codification. The applicant is proposing to increase the location of the PVC fence, which was previously approved at five feet to ten feet from the property line. And staff recommended approval with that deviation subject to condition nine B, which is the enhanced buffering standard. Deviation six, again, just kind of rectifies what was previously approved. This is acknowledging the code codification update. And this was approved for the previous clubhouse and will remain to support the existing clubhouse. Deviation seven, again, goes into required spaces. And this, I need to talk with the applicant because there no longer is a situation where we have a multiple occupancy complex with that square footage because it has been reduced to twenty-three thousand square feet. So this deviation, as staff sees it, should be withdrawn. Deviation eight and nine, again, deviation eight was previously approved and it's just being changed to reflect the codification. Deviation nine has been withdrawn. Deviation ten, this is a new deviation. This goes over the information that Mr. Kirby talked about regarding the off-site mitigation, which would be either the fee in lieu or the applicant could buy and purchase and maintain themselves. So again, the two options. So it's in support of condition eight. Deviation eleven deals with the building separation. Again, staff's requesting that in certain circumstances for buildings over fifty-five feet, they be half the sum of the height of the building that is adjacent to a building in TC two. So staff recommended approval with condition subject to condition three. And deviation twelve is essentially to memorialize the request of seventy-five feet for the building height. Again, our code requires that they obtain a deviation whenever you're requesting heights over fifty-five feet west of US forty-one on Benita Beach Road. And again, for the findings, these are the ten findings that staff has to review and you as a zoning board and also the city council in making their recommendation on a zoning request. So staff felt it did meet the performance and location standards. As conditioned by staff, we felt the densities and intensities were consistent with the conference of plan as it relates to compatibility. Again, as conditioned by staff, we feel that the use can be compatible with the neighborhood, again, respective of the building height restrictions as proposed by staff. Approval of the request may place, or will place, a burden on the transportation network, but we have proportionate fair share conditions that will address that pursuant to state statute. It won't affect environmentally critical areas. As Mr. Kirby testified, it makes more sense to provide the off-site mitigation. It's a better use of space for those uses. Urban services are available, the mixed uses are appropriate, adequate conditions are in place. Deviations protect health, public safety, welfare, and the deviations enhance the project as requested. And with that, staff and his hear of to answer any questions you may have of us.
Thank you. Any questions of the, of the board? Further questions? Rebuttal?
Is there any more public?
Any public? Sorry. Public, yes, step forward. In your name.
My name is Tom Runyon, R-U-N-Y-O-N. I was sworn in earlier. I'm the chairman of the Benita Village Community Development District and secretary of the Master Association, the Benita Village Community Association. The board of the Benita Village CDD, which among other things is charged with the operation and maintenance of the underground vault stormwater drainage system, unanimously supports the proposed development plan submitted before you today. As a board member of the Benita Village Master Association and the community association manager for all three Benita Village member associations, I can tell you that the proposed development plans are supported by almost all of the eighty current members. As a forty-two-year resident of Lee County, I would like to say that this project is an example of the high-quality, impactful, and well-planned development that benefits all the residents. And we hope you'll approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's somebody else? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
I need to swear you in, and you were sworn in earlier, Mr. Runyon.
Yes, she was.
Please swear firm testimony. You provide today's truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you for speaking, and bring the microphone then.
I'm Susan Lindner, L-I-N-D-N-E-R. I'm a resident of Benita Springs. Been in the hospitality and tourism business for quite so many years. Was with the Naples Chamber of Commerce and helped promote Naples as a premier destination. I'm really kind of surprised that nobody's questioning three hundred and ninety rooms, hotel rooms. That's astronomical. If you look at the Hyatt Regency and the Ritz-Carlton, they both have four hundred and fifty-four rooms. That's only sixty or sixty-five rooms less than what Benita Village is offering or wanting to build. That's a lot of rooms. Also, if you look at the Ritz-Carlton Golf Lodge in addition to, they have two hundred and ninety-five rooms, which is ninety-five less than what they're asking for. The common denominator for most of our hotels are beach and also golf. Not G-O-L-F, but G-O-L-F. And I just question what Benita Village is going to offer our guests coming into town. Last meeting was canceled. We turned in two hundred and eight opposing petition signatures. And again, today, I turned in a hundred and eleven. That's three hundred and nineteen opposing voices in this community. He wants to promote this hotel as a car-free eco-resort and charge a high overnight parking fee and running four shuttles. I really can't see me coming to Southwest Florida and not having a car where I can go to the Everglades or I can, you know, go to Edison Home. I want to do it on my own time. I don't think Hertz Car Rental Company, one of our neighbors up the street, would appreciate that either. We're promoting tourism, they rely on tourism, they rely on car rental. Traffic of most of these oppositions, traffic has been like ninety-five percent concerned. But I, as a person in tourism business, question the three hundred and ninety rooms that are going to be built. And what are they going to do? Where are they going to go? Just to the beach? Oh, yeah, we're going to go shopping. We'll pick them up at the airport. Well, one shuttle alone is going to be really busy picking people up at the airport. Basically, we say, there's, what, three hundred and nineteen of us that oppose it. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay. Not seeing any.
Roger, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Worster.
I'm sorry, I'm boring you. I have a question for Audrey. The, last month's meeting, it was noted, people made presentations because they didn't want to have to come back this week. Will all that be part of the record of this hearing?
Yes, I mean, that will be incorporated. The clerk will make sure she has that as participants of record. I believe there were two people who spoke that day. And so they'll be included. And also, just as a reminder, city council did change the process. So now, people who do not attend this hearing, as well as the people who did attend this hearing, but can all go to the city council hearing, which we are confirming the date when we're going to have it. It looks like we need to do a slight modification because of council member absences. It looks like it may be the afternoon of September twenty-second. Just for everybody on the TV night.
Okay. Well, we've heard both sides now.
Can we have like a, are we, are we under the two o'clock timeline or not?
Yeah, we're fine. It's one forty, we're good. You want to take a break?
Okay, can I have like three minutes to talk to my experts to see?
Sure.
So I can hopefully shrink down what we tell you? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll adjourn for, take a three-minute adjournment.
Excuse me, Audrey. Audrey?